Thank you everyone for rise for our pledge of allegiance and invocation. And Jerry Jones, our commissar Jerry Jones will handle the pledge and the invocation.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this sunny, beautiful morning and the many blessings you provide for us every day. Lord, please look after our military men and women while they're away defending this great nation, protecting from harm's way and returning them safely to their loved ones. Lord, we ask a special prayer for the people of Ukraine and the families who have lost loved ones. Lord, please bless our county employees that help make Green County a better place to live and work. Dear God, we look to you to guide us in the business presented to the commissioners this morning and provide each of us with the knowledge and wisdom to help make best decisions for the citizens of Green County. Lord, we ask all these things in your name and all of God's children, say it, amen. Please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Bella Commissioners, you have the proposed agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
Move to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman, if there are no changes.
Have a motion until approved. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, needed further discussion. Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. We have our consent agenda. Is there a need for any change to the consent agenda?
The March twenty first minutes have been corrected.
Yep.
And presented to commissioners.
Absolutely.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, with corrections made.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, needed further discussion. Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Board of Equalization and Review, Ms. Wiggins. Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I need to administer the oath. If you will affirm at the end by saying I do, and then please sign and date and give your copy to the Cathy at the end. I solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Green County, North Carolina, and that I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
I do, I will.
All right. As of today, April fourth, there have been no formal requests received to appeal real property to the Board of E and R. At this time, I'll entertain any concerns or issues from the audience. Okay, here are none. I recommend recess of the twenty twenty two Board of E and R until Monday, April eighteenth at seven P. M.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second, needed further discussion on that. Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you so much. Public comments.
We have one, Mr. Salvador Tenoco, regarding personnel.
Okay, and I'm going to remind that public comments, I held to three minutes, and I'm going to ask the county attorney to be the keeper of the time for other police. Thank you, Mr. Tenoco.
Although I do respect, you know, the three minutes, I kind of doesn't disagree. Three minutes is not enough sometimes for a concerned citizen to come and express his or her thoughts. I think that, you know, that should be revised. So I do apologize for last time going over my three minutes. I'm here again to touch the base, touch base on the personnel issues and the challenge that I put Mr. De Haven, the county manager, in the retained of Mr. Dillon, our ex code enforcement officer. You know, obviously, he's not with our county anymore, so obviously, he left. And the question that I want to ask the board is how many more employees are we going to continue to lose to other counties and other agencies? You know, as a business owner, I said last time how it affected us, you know, personally, when a building inspector leaves, we have to build a new relationship with the new one that comes back, and it's hard, you know, to gain that trust from that inspector. And, you know, as that, that is a, that is an example that follows with other employees that we lose and we continue to lose. So the question is, which, which one and how many more are we going to lose to negligence and, you know, to other things of that nature? You know, we need to understand that we cannot continue to stifle human potential and to restrict, you know, good employees from their growth and advancement in their own home and in their own county. And, you know, this board, this county is ran by a five people, not by three, and certainly not by one person, you know? So there should be a better form of communication between the employee and the leadership, the employer. You know, Mr. Dillon was not even given the benefit of the doubt to express, you know, his concerns to Mr. De Haven, for which, you know, he left. So it's important as a business owner that we gain that cooperation. You know, the, the conflict of politics is, doesn't always work good in the real world. What works good in the real world is cooperation between local government and private business, and something that we don't see in Green County. And I say that as a business owner, you know, that is affected by the turnaround, turnover of employees. You know, unfortunately, we don't know the officer's name by heart because there's so many that come and go like we used to. So I would like, and I, and I, and I ran out of time, but I'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tenoco. Having none others for public comments, I will close the public comments section. First presentation, Ms. Brock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three things for you this morning. They were all included in your packet. The first one is the Green County Child Fatality Prevention Team and Community Child Protection Team. That is a joint team here in Green County. We've had to update our members, and so you'll see the list of membership that we have presented for you. The reason why that I present this to you is if you will look on the second page where it talks about composition of the local teams, there are actually two members that are appointed by the county commissioners. I've done my homework and I've reached out to both agencies. You'll see the first one is a local law enforcement officer. I did reach out in February when Sheriff Smith was still here and spoke to Debbie May, and I just spoke to Sheriff Sasser when he came in. We do have a representative for the Green County Sheriff's Office in that position, and below in letter C, you'll see emergency medical services provider or firefighter, that's also appointed by the county commissioners. I reached out to Mr. Brock Kearney in February as well as in the past, the Emergency Services Director has served in that position. So I present to you the whole list of membership, but those two members actually have to be appointed by the county commissioners.
Move to appoint, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to appoint, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to appoint. Any further discussion? Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second thing I have is for our Board of Health vacant positions. So this memo just serves as our information to you, our plan of action, how we will advertise for these two vacancies. You can see that, I won't read it out to you, but we are seeking a pharmacist and a registered nurse. One of those individuals is eligible to serve again. The other individual is no longer eligible to serve, he's done his three consecutive three-year terms. So you can see the advertisement at the bottom, how it will read, and this is just for informational purposes, but we'll come back to you at your May sixteenth meeting with the Board of Health recommendation for those two positions to serve.
Thank you.
And then the final thing that I have, sorry, next to the last thing, so I'm not going to read it to you because this was included in your packet, I know the agenda is kind of lengthy today, but it is a proclamation for Public Health Week twenty twenty-two, and that is for April fourth through the tenth, and I would ask you to accept this proclamation.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, needed further discussion. Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. While I have the floor, I will mention COVID testing is still going on at the community center on Harper Street, but I do want to make the announcement that Monday, April eleventh, there will be no testing on that day.
I do have one question for you. It's been in the news about having another booster shot sort of thing. Where are we, where are we with that?
It's coming. I mean, we're, we have all the vaccine that we have, so we can, we can start doing those if you meet the timeline. The only thing we're still waiting on is the, the less than five-year-olds. That hasn't been approved yet.
Okay.
This new, this new vaccine, do you need to wait a little bit longer, or you need to go ahead and get it now, especially for the sixty-five and older ones? And how long does it last? Is it going to be another booster in October, November, or nobody know?
I can't speak for that. All I can say is that if you're immunocompromised and you fit in that category, you are eligible for a booster.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brock. Ms. Tammy.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Great to see you, and thank you so much for allowing us to have this opportunity to give an update. It's been over two years, and definitely so much has changed since prior, when I was here before. And what I provided you with is a PowerPoint presentation that has workforce data, and just would like to say that from the Workforce Development Board standpoint, if you do find you need more data about your workforce, if there's any information that you would like to request or like for us to research on, we will be more than happy to do so. In the presentation slides, it just kind of highlights some of the activity in workforce development. For the board, we service the Administrative Fiscal Agent for the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Funds. We serve nine counties, Carteret, Craven, Duplin, Green, Jones, Lenore, Onslow, Pamlico, and Wayne Counties. We oversee the NC Works Career Centers in our region. In Green, Jones Counties, the career center services are delivered through Lenore Community College. They also are the grant recipient for our funds that we give them. Green County's portion of our allocation for program year twenty twenty-one was roughly around one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And those funds are really earmarked for unemployed, underemployed adults, individuals who've lost their jobs through no fund on their own, and are at-risk youth who may have dropped out of school, or they may have graduated and they're still not working. We have resources that can help with tuition assistance, books, supplies, childcare, transportation, on-the-job training, and work experience. And just as an example, for Lenore Community College right now, Tracy Price, the youth career advisor, she has eight youth working here in Green County, and she works predominantly with Mr. Mike Anderson with your rec center. She's had great success in placing in full-time employment, three of the participants, one at Atlantic Eye Care, and then the Hookerton, I had to write that down, Family Practices, and the Health Department. So she's been very proud of the progress made. Recruitment in a time of a pandemic has been the biggest challenge that we've seen. In two years' time, right now, for anybody who wants to go to school, pretty much they can go to school. Resources are available to assist, so I did bring extra brochures for job seekers with contact information to leave, but we do need help with recruitment. We are on social media to the extent possible, and we've actually partnered with Lenore Community College for a billboard, they have one on seventy. So the priority for us has been what can we do to engage job seekers in going to school, taking advantage of opportunities to work on that credential to help them skill up? The types of training that we have available, that we really promote are directed in career pathways that show the most promise in this region. Healthcare, advanced manufacturing, construction and skilled trade, aerospace and aviation, you know, those are just to name a few. And we have opportunities even further, for example, for on-the-job training. If somebody wants to go to work right now, they can't go to school, there's where the employers could be reimbursed up to fifty percent of those wages during that training period to help get people into employment quickly. And then the work-based learning opportunity allows for a person who's enrolled in training to be able to take advantage of having the opportunity to explore that career and be paid the same comparable wage in that field of study while they're going to school for up to six months. I think it's like three hundred and twenty hours in one position, and then they could do a three hundred and twenty hour in a light position for that experience. And I say all that because right now workforce development is a critical topic across the state and across the region. We thought that during the pandemic, and that, you know, we would see all kinds of closures, businesses closing, people unemployed, and we did initially, like the first two or three months, but the rebound has been, I think, you know, for everybody's surrisment, a big amazing story that our unemployment rates today are actually lower than what they were pre-pandemic. And Green County's unemployment continues to be lower than what our regional unemployment is. The latest numbers showed Green County at three point three, whereas the region was showing a three point eight unemployment. So I think that says a lot about coming into Green County, even from two years ago, which I've been here since then, but looking to see the progressive growth in this county is something that you can be proud of. For our board members, an example, Rick Davis, who serves on our board representing Ty Tamer, and he did represent Green County as your Economic Developer on our board, he presented at our last board meeting in March. And if you haven't heard their success story, I would encourage you to listen to Rick's story in his presentation. But what he was able to talk about to the board, you know, we've had different businesses on our board present where they've had challenges finding workers, retaining workers, identifying where they could be. But in Ty Tamer's story, you would hear a different story where the pandemic actually brought opportunity and how they changed their whole focus and was able to pivot and create basically a new line, or take a line and really expand it in the whole elevating the boat business. And so I would encourage you to listen, if you haven't had the chance to, Rick, but that's an example of the discussions that go on in the board meetings. Companies that are doing well, you know, what are their, how are they doing it? What are their best practices that they can share? And then businesses that are struggling, how can the workforce system, how can we help in, in ways that, that we're doing things differently? And another example, Spirit Aero Systems. At the onset of the pandemic, we had just signed a contract with Spirit, and it was going to be through Lenore Community College. They were interested in hiring thirty-eight individuals through the on-the-job training program. That would have been our largest OJT contract ever, you know, in my experience in our region with an employer. Pandemic happened, that stopped it. Well, now they're moving forward again in a way of helping Spirit find workers in this partnership with Lenore Community College, the Division of Workforce Solutions through NC Works, was how can we be creative with career fairs? And so Spirit was one that said, let's try a Saturday morning. They've held two different sessions on a Saturday morning for their recruitment at the campus at Lenore through the NC Works, and that is a way of pivoting where before eight to five, that's great and wonderful, but now employers are saying we need more flexibility, we need activity in the evenings, we need activity on the weekends to really try to recruit and, and have better, more informed outreach. So those are just a couple of examples of showing ways that our center has, and our career centers have really expanded out in the public. The other, and the most important, that we see is through virtual services. The NCworks.gov has implemented a chat function where customers now can apply on the phone, they can register on the computer, or if they need help, they can call the eight-hundred number, or they can participate in chat and get somebody to help them with their job search or addressing any questions they have as it relates to employment. We're trying all of this in, in our region, and we're seeing some success, but when I look at the numbers of people taking advantage of training, we don't see the numbers like we would hope. And right now, with workforce challenges, we're really working with our schools and with the colleges to promote the value of education, the value of a credential, and what it means in landing a good job in this region. When I complete, I'll call up Dr. George Kramer and, and Green County Schools, but to talk about another initiative that we're involved in, really to help promote work-ready communities, and then My Future NC, which you may already know about, the governor's goal to have two million with a credential by the year twenty thirty. And through that initiative, they released a grant opportunity where local collaboratives could apply, and this was to help promote setup strategies, track, and evaluate how successful we are in, in counties to meet that goal. In our region, for the nine counties, that, that two million really equates to seventeen thousand more customers within our region to really get that credential. And we received a grant, it's a small grant for thirty-three thousand dollars, twenty-five, I think, thousand of those is just for partnering with the schools and the colleges for outreach. So it could be for materials, social media campaign, website development, brochures, materials, helping the schools promote their pathways and helping the colleges and schools with educational attainment, high school diploma, and then going on to the community college for short-term, long-term training. So we're very proud of that partnership, and we branded that Our Future ENC, and that is a collaborative with the seven colleges and the nine schools. Another initiative that we've embarked upon, and we hope that we will see some success, is free grants, scholarships through Grow with Google on I T, and this would be for unemployed, underemployed individuals that have registered for NC Works. It's training that they can take, they're assigned to a Google subject matter expert, somebody on their team, and it's module-based, all virtual, where they could be trained in I T fields as it relates to technology and some of the programs, and those are free scholarships. We have one hundred of them, so we hope to promote them here in Green County and throughout the region. And in this handout that I gave you, it has workforce data, your largest employers, what the education trends are, and it gives you more information about our NC Works Career Centers for job seekers and employers. And then I also provided you with a copy of our annual report from twenty twenty-one, we're very proud of it. What the report really reflected was is during a time of a pandemic, when we when we all had to wear masks and social distance, there were new ways of doing business. The career centers were throughout the region, were out and about in the community, holding outside career fairs and working outside, trying to address needs that job seekers or employers may have. So I do hope that you'll read through it and if you have questions that you definitely will ask. If you would like more information on labor market trends for this particular county and region, we will be glad to research that for you. And a couple of more things, we have great board members. And I mentioned Rick Davis, who served on our board representing economic development, now is Ty Tamer. We have Judy Darden, who has been on our board since nineteen ninety-nine. She's excellent, she serves on our executive committee, she's engaged, always a phone call away. She served once as our secretary treasurer for our board. And we have Ms. Angela Bates, who joined me today. Angela, representing Green Lamp, has been on our board. I told her I just couldn't believe it, since two thousand and eleven. So for Green County, we have some excellent board members who really commit. Angela serves on our youth council. I mentioned Judy serves on our executive council committee. And Rick serves on our NC Works Business Services Committee. But I want to say thank you for your board appointments to our county. I want to thank Commissioner Jerry Jones for attending our consortium meetings. And Commissioner, he has attended our consortium meetings. Our board appointments will be expiring for this term on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. I did reach out to our three board members to see if they would be willing to serve another term, if that was the desire of the county. And all three said yes, so that's a good plus. If you'll, whenever you do your appointments or reappointments. The last, I do want to make you aware of one topic that's kind of important, hot off the press. And I'd rather you hear it from me because you will hear it in a couple of weeks probably. But our governor, Cooper, along with the NC Works Commission, has completed a study. And last week at the NC Works Commission, Governor Cooper was on the call to talk about it. And what they're looking to do is across the state, there are twenty-three workforce development boards. And like everything else, regionalism, the prosperity zones, there are eight prosperity zones. There are sixteen council of governments, the community colleges have their regions, social services has their regions, commissioners have their regions, everybody has regions and territory. But what has just been released is a realignment of workforce boards. They want boards more aligned with economic development. And I want you to know that for our nine counties, we are already within, we are the same nine counties as our council of governments. We are the same nine counties that are part of the southeast prosperity zone. So we don't see any real impact or change necessary for our region. We partner with the Cape Fear Workforce Board, they have three of the twelve counties. We have nine of the twelve counties. But they did announce that they would be sending letters to the chairmans of the Boards of Commissioners and our consortium members and our chief elected official. So I just wanted you to know so that when you get the letter, you feel like, okay, now I understand what Tammy was talking about. But it gives you the option at any point. And it defines a process where if counties wanted to change and join other regions, this is that process to do so. So I hope that Green County would continue to stay and be a part of our nine-county consortium. That's what we talked about at our last consortium meeting. And I, if you have any questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me for clarification. And then at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. George Kramer and for our work-ready communities presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm business services representative for the board. My role is to work with the businesses in the area and to determine as best we can, what are their needs? And with that, to work with the school systems to try to understand where is the talent available? As well, of course, as just mentioned, all the variety of services that the board and the economic system offers. Our concern, of course, is to try to keep the businesses in place and working with economic development to try to recruit new employers. The state initiated this program back in ninety-nine, ninety-six timeframe as an assessment activity to kind of give a better preparation for an employer to screen applicants. And it was then the career readiness certification. Individuals who were taking it, primarily high schoolers, got a certificate at one of three level, five levels, four levels. I'll get the right number, bronze, silver, gold and platinum. If an individual had a bronze certificate, it was roughly the equivalent of a high school diploma. If they had the next levels and had stepped up, college, university. For those few that had the platinum level, I'm not sure what they were considered, but they weren't genius, but they certainly had a lot of potential. Well, the employers obviously use that as a kind of a screen. But we didn't have a good indication of how those individuals who had the credentials could step into the employer's site and be successful. In two thousand and thirteen, then the state with ACT, formerly the American College Testing Program, became an independent operation. They do assessments for all size of business and employer organization to do profiling and then to evaluate to say, and make a commitment. Do we recommend, do we recognize, do we require any one of these certificate levels? But they had to have something to kind of validate it, so that was part of the profiling program. We've done probably thirty profiles in the region. Obviously gotten a lot of information. It's been both informative to the employers and certainly been gratifying to say, yeah, I now have a better indication of where we are and we can promote individuals who really have the potential for growth and success to enhance our business. So we have continued that program and I'm delighted to report that Green County has participated along with the other eight counties. And now this is the third level of the cycle as it moves forward. That they have to have so many test reports, they have to have so much acknowledgement from employers of participation. So far, Green County has given two thousand three hundred and one certificates. And we have twenty-seven employers who recognize the program. So our hope is that we can continue moving forward. We work with economic development directors and teams and as obviously with the employers to try to understand what is the concern, where are we in terms of training programs? All of that goes back to the school systems, both the secondary and the post-secondary to say, we need to have a greater emphasis in particular programs, particular activities. As you heard Tammy mention, our pathways are kind of our guide with the employers to say, here's what's available, help us, what do you think we should do differently than what we've been doing? There's obviously moving target constantly with the economy. We have an awful lot of concerns with individuals who have some reluctance to step forward to say, I want to get a job. Many of them that we talk with and engage with, we find out, I don't really know what I want to do. Well, the assessments are a way at least of giving them some preparation for that. So we hope we can continue doing this and certainly appreciate the efforts of Green County and certainly your efforts. But you have earned three certificates and congratulations on that. And with that in mind, a formal plaque will be presented sometime in December to acknowledge that. And then we'll move into the new cycle for the next two years. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but otherwise you are a work-ready community and you're maintaining status. Congratulations.
I do have one question, I'm surprised it is. We have a new business that's coming to the county, graphics design, seventy employees, good jobs, that sort of thing. And at the announcement of that business coming to the county, LCC was certainly there, very present there. Are they falling under the umbrella of what you do at East Carolina Workforce Development?
Absolutely.
I thought they would, but I just wanted to bring that as a, that new business that's coming is bringing seventy new jobs and we appreciate what you're doing to help.
Thank you.
To try to get qualified people for them to employ.
I might add, some of these businesses obviously are looking for different levels of certification. They all want the bronze, but they would prefer some of the higher levels so that they have an opportunity to say to the business, and of course their stakeholders, that here's a business that's growing and a community that's supporting it. We've got the individuals who are available for employment and we have a rich future. We hope we can grow the business and be prosperous. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much.
One question for clarification, you keep mentioning businesses. Are county and municipalities considered a business as far as employees go?
The program basically deals with an employer. Whatever the employer's business is.
We're employed about two hundred and thirty-five.
The not-for-profits, but we spend a lot of time with the profit nonprofits. And if we can help them, we'll certainly do that. The program offers same kind of service to any group formerly, though we may be focused a little bit differently in how we would follow up. Typically, when we do the assessments, we find out there's some gaps. Either it's a reading skill or it's mathematics or the one that's probably most prevalent in operations is locating information. Can you read a graphic, a chart, a map and then respond to it? As we're hearing so many of the employers today, they want, they're moving in that direction much more aggressively. Reading is extremely important, but if you can't locate something and do it rather quickly, the automation and all the activities and the speed with which it's exploding almost is making it a challenge for employers and operations. So that's, those three things drive a lot of these activities. And if we find there's a gap, we go to the school systems, we encourage them and ask them to help us with training programs. And with what you heard from Tammy say, we provide support for that activity as well. So we try to, it's all bundled, sometimes a little bit muddled too because some of the fine lines are saying you can or can't do or don't do. But otherwise, we're responsive to the employers, we're dealing, of course, with the school systems and of course the community at large to say, here's what's available, how can we help you?
Again, our deference to our departments that have to have certification for employees, specifically law enforcement and emergency medical services. Do we have that track or pathway within our school systems to potentially look for candidates that could fill that position? I thought I heard you say fifty percent reimbursement for the training process if they fall in that category?
Yes, ma'am, for the on-the-job training program.
Yes. So they would have to go through your office?
Through LCC, through Lenore Community College, through the NC Works. And Samara Taft would be the person I would recommend. But as an example, the city of Jacksonville, they have these on-the-job training for a couple of positions.
I have a platinum certificate already, so if I can do it, everybody can do it.
But that was just one more question. You know, we do have that that we're going to be facing here shortly and we are facing it now as far as positions go, if we could come up with some kind of law enforcement pathway or emergency medical services pathway to get individuals, our youth in the high schools interested in those careers for what it means with those.
No, public safety is one of those factors that I could already think about considering for the future.
Thank you.
And I will make this-
We have seen student interest in that from the last, excuse me, from the last survey.
And I will make just one last comment. You know, you provide a very valued service. And we're fortunate enough to be a part of the GTP Economic Development Region. And our three-county region, which is Wayne, Lenore and Green Counties, we've announced quite a few businesses recently, including Bee's, which is our building and retro system business that's in the county here. And so we do appreciate everything that you all do to try to get people, your task force ready. I mean, that's your task and we do appreciate all that you do.
I think there's been even more so, the partnership of like Green County Schools, the colleges. You know, everybody really feels that sense of urgency to, I mean, the team has always been there to work together. But right now with new businesses coming into our region, looking to relocate, our population is continuing to grow. The housing market, you know, houses are not staying on the market long, people are moving in here. So we do want to promote the whole NC Works system, register for employment at NCworks.gov, talk to a career advisor and then from there start looking at pathways options because there are resources that can help direct and help toward those certifications. And then those agreements with the school systems and the colleges certainly are definitely in place for a smooth transition into a pathway from whatever high school choices they've made on into the college and then on into the workforce. But we appreciate the partnership and the support from Green County Board of Commissioners, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you ever have questions, please feel free to call me.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Thank you. Mr. Kearney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to give an update on the paramedic transition plan. And before I do that, what I need to do is I want to thank y'all. Because without the support of the county government and the leadership, we would not be where we're at today. So if it weren't for the resources and the funding that were put into place, we just, we wouldn't be operating at a level we are. Additionally, we need to thank our staff, our staff members. If it wasn't for them, we still wouldn't be where we're at. There's a lot of our staff members that really, our whole department, they stepped up during the past eighteen to twenty-four months to make this a reality for the citizens of Green County. So if it wasn't for the county leadership, the boots on the ground, having a common goal that we're trying to come towards to improve the level of service we provide to the citizens, we just, we wouldn't be where we're at today. So again, thank y'all for the support that you've done so far and the support that you continue to provide our office. So we went live with providing paramedic service February first, so we're two months into it. We, there's been some good things that have gone on in two months. We've seen some citizens really benefit from the paramedic level care that we're providing. So every, if there's an EMS call, the way it's kind of going is every citizen is receiving, or not just citizens, but every person requesting a nine-one-one service is receiving that paramedic level initial assessment. So there, everybody is being assessed by a paramedic level provider. So during the two months, we've kind of, we've had to go through a little training phase because we do have some newer paramedics that we've trained, you know, they're kind of, they're up to speed to where we need to be. So we're kind of weaning off from that training phase and everybody's good. Our medical director, he's on board. He has done a onboard process with all of our paramedics and he has signed off and said that everybody is good to go. As we have new paramedics coming to the system, he will do the same thing with them. And he signs off before they're able to operate at a paramedic level. So with that being the case, we've kind of, we've moved away from the training period. We're good, we're all standing on our own feet. It's time for us to start transitioning in the process of filling our EMS manager and our shift supervisor positions in a full-time, permanent role. So that's something that you'll likely be seeing over the next few months is those positions being offered and going through a process. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions? I'm just tickled to death that you are where you are.
I am too. Paramedic is what the community wants, that's top rate service.
Very thankful for the support that's been provided.
I know you probably do not have it, but do you have some statistical data of how much calls we've had of February and March and how many of those were actually paramedic calls?
I do not on hand, but what I can do is I can pull that data and I can provide it to y'all so y'all can have a, you know, an understanding of-
Send in our emails.
Right, sure.
That gives us factual data.
That's right, that's right.
And again, thank you for all your assistance in getting this program through. I'm sure there's been some bumps and bruises and-
There has, there's been some, but it's-
To be some bumps and bruises. That will have to be addressed. I don't think personal intent- I don't think personal intent on any of the things that's said-
Right.
Or to any department. It seems like those feelings could kind of slip in there at times. I do appreciate what you've done in the past and your staff, um, and continue going down the same road.
Thank you.
Hope we get these next transitions done quickly.
Right. We, uh, we appreciate the support that's been provided. Any additional questions?
Any other questions, comments? I've got a staple of gratitude, thank you.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Your honor. We'll call up the judge with a great last name.
That's what I'll say.
Oh my.
So, how's everybody today?
Doing fine.
Fine, thank you. Good. Y'all have been out there a long time already this morning, and I don't want to, um, be too terribly long, but I do, uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to, um, speak with you guys.
I thought, um, so, I can't believe it, but this is my twentieth year on the bench. And so I was elected in twenty, uh, two thousand and two, and I spent a lot of time in Green County, and some of you folks were back here then, uh, during that process. Uh, and here I am, twenty years later, standing in front of you guys. And so, we've been operating a drug court that whole time, and I don't think I've ever been over here and spoken to you guys about it. So I'm really glad to be able to do that today, um, and I'll get into some more reasons about why. Um, do I, how do I? Just a, okay, so, okay, you can keep my, uh, this is pretty lengthy, and I think maybe the better thing might be sometime if y'all want more of the information, you can email it out to everybody, but I'm going to move through it kind of quickly, so if you can, y'all know who I am, so. Um, why I have accountability and recovery courts, and that's what we're calling them now, um, is, uh, recovery courts. We first started out, it was, we called them drug courts. Um, but now it's expanded so much more beyond that, because we now have what are called mental health courts, DWI courts, veterans courts, and drug courts, that are all part of this process of, uh, why an accountability and recovery court is so important, which is that it brings together two very important things, which is the court system, the justice system, and treatment. And it addresses all those, they have the potential to address all those kind of issues, and that's what makes them special and what makes them work. Uh, these are, this is just some more information, uh, drug courts save money, and that's what you guys are interested in. It saves money, uh, from your jail, from your law enforcement, from other things that are provided in the court system, and those are numbers that can be looked at nationally. So, um, so again, I, like I said, it brings together the two parts that are, are so important, the justice system and treatment, but we are, um, also bringing together part, uh, individuals and members of the community to work together to try to help people in their recovery. That includes law enforcement, Department of Social Services, um, the District Attorney's Office. Uh, all those folks come together to, um, to make the process work. So, um, why would you guys be interested in that? Again, saving money, but also because drug courts have been shown to make your community safer. And that's what the average person wants. They want to know their community's safe. And then the other thing is that, um, and, and Ms. Stanley knows this, because I work with her all the time in Abuse Neglect and Dependency Court. Drug courts help families reunite and keep families together and to reunite, which again, can save money, uh, particularly in your Department of Social Services and in other places, uh, in your communities. So, kind of the history, right now, there are sixty-one recovery courts in North Carolina, and you can see, um, all the different kinds of, of, y'all do have that, right? Okay, behind me, um, you can see it, um, the different kinds of recovery courts that there are. Uh, and you can see how they're broken down by county. That sixty-one does not mean is sixty-one counties have it, because they don't. Some counties have several different kinds of courts, and they're really, uh, only those thirty-two counties that have, ha- out of a hundred that have recovery courts. And I'm very, uh, proud to say that our, and I heard y'all talking about this earlier, the district being Wayne, Lenore, and Green Counties for the economic development. Well, we are Wayne, Lenore, and Green Counties too, for the eight judicial districts. And so, um, and I'm proud to say that we now have a drug court in each one of our counties, including over here. So, um, we, um, started the Family Accountability Recovery Court in two thousand and five, and we are right now in the process of train, of planning and training to create our adult, uh, drug court. And so the differences are, the referrals come to Family Accountability Recovery Court out of that DSS environment, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. The Adult Accountability Recovery Court, those referrals come out of, uh, criminal court. So, I, I'm proud of this as well. Last year, we were selected by the, um, Rural Justice Collaborative Advisory Council in partnership with the National Center for State Courts as one of nine out of the country, uh, rural innovative sites for our drug court program. So what we're trying to do in the family drug court is we are bringing together, again, the treatment and judicial supervision to try to either prevent children from being removed from their families, or to bring them back together. So, that, the folks that are eligible are those that are parents, guardians, or custodians. Sometimes it might be grandmas have their kids, or other aunts and uncles. We work with anybody who have a, a substance use problem that's impacting their ability to parent, and their children are at risk or have been removed from, um, D, by DSS. So these numbers, I want y'all to look at, of course, y'all can see COVID's in the middle of these numbers, and it's just hard to look at data around the COVID time and get a real good idea about what happened. But you can see that in, in the, the first column, in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen year, we had ninety-two families, a hundred and seventy-three children involved, and of those hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and thirty-two were impacted by substance use. These are district-wide numbers, so, uh, Green County's included in this. Um, and then look at the next, um, block, we were a- able to actually, um, collect the data on. Our petitions went up, our children involved went way up, and the number of children impacted by substance use went way up, two hundred and sixty-five plus. So, it's not going away, folks, the substance use issue is not going away. Um, we had referrals into our program, uh, and, and, and then you can see how the referrals come in, and then how many folks actually enter the program, and then the numbers that graduate. And this is important to look at, because, um, um, we are miss, we have plenty of people to participate, you can see that, and then we're losing them. They may come the first time or two to drug court, but they don't engage, and they don't stay, and they don't complete the process. And it is a labor-intensive pro- process. You don't have great big numbers, uh, in, in these types of programs, and that's nationwide. But so, being able to look at this data, we started trying to figure out, well, why are we not engaging them? Why are we missing them? And that's something we've been trying to really work on our program to address. So this is what we've done, and we've just started it, so I can't really tell you that it's working. I'd like to come back in a year after we've been doing it during that time to, to let you know. But, um, traditionally, we had a one-track program where the folks were recommended, or they were ordered out of, um, Abuse Neglect and Dependency Court. There was already a petition filed, there was an adjudication, and then there was disposition. And then we worked with them for, they had to be clean for two hundred and seventy days, um, to graduate from the program. Well, as we were trying to figure out why we weren't getting those people in and getting them engaged, we, we noticed that by, and, uh, and, Ms. Stanley, I know she can address this too. We, we found that that di- by the time they had a petition filed, a lot of the times, sometimes there's an emergency, it happens right away, but a lot of times, DSS, which they're supposed to do by policy, has been working with them already for several months, and they just have fatigue about it. And so they just are like, almost kind of giving up by the time we would get them. So we have implemented a second track, which is to try to get folks in working with us before there's a petition, and maybe even to be that carrot, that there's never a petition. If they come and they, they, um, participate and they're successful, their children may not even get removed. So that's the new part, and that's to be continued for a report on how that's working. Um, so how drug court works is we meet every two weeks in the courthouse, or, um, some similar place. Um, and we staff to start with, and then we have court. So at staffing, uh, our members of our staffing team come together, we talk about our participants, we get reports on how they've been doing, and we decide whether they're making progress or do, or not, and, and do we need to give them some sort of incentive or some kind of sanction to try to encourage their continued cooperation. In the middle of those two weeks, their responsibility is treatment. They have to get their treatment, and they have at least, uh, two random drug screens a week. They literally call in a, a phone number every single morning at eight o'clock, says today's a drug test day, today's not a drug test day. They have till about four-thirty that afternoon to get to a drug test, which we, which we make every abil- every possibility for them to be able to do that drug test. And I've even had folks over here, um, in, with, um, in, in probation and other places who've been willing to help us send our people here to get a drug test on drug testing day. So they have constant contact with our, uh, FARC case coordinator and our peer support specialist. This is what our staffing looks like. And this is a court session which happens right after staffing, and you can see that looks more traditional in one sense, because we're in the courtroom, but, but it is a very much a different kind of process. When these people come to me in court, I may be sitting up there, but I'm talking to them. I spend a lot of time talking with them. And sometimes they don't start out really wanting to talk to me, because they're not used to being in court where a judge talks to them, or they get allowed to say much of anything. So that's something I have to work on, is trying to build that relationship with them, so that they will talk and engage with me about what is going on in their, um, in their lives. Here's a graduation, you can see, we, um, we encourage them when they graduate, we want them to bring their families, their friends, the people that support them. This, uh, couple both graduated, mom and dad, and they brought their kids with them. We celebrate with cake and other things, and the kids run around and eat cake and chips and drinks, and, uh, we give them little gifts and things to acknowledge and, and, um, the really significant progress that they make when they get to this point. Uh, just quickly for funding, this is kind of detailed, but the state funded drug courts from two thousand and five to twenty-eleven. In twenty-eleven, it was cut from the state budget. And we were still, uh, at that, so the state did not support the program. We still wanted to keep doing it in, in our district, so that began a long, 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 long journey for me to try to keep things going. You cannot operate a drug court without staff, you have to have staff. My staff was completely cut out when they defunded the program, and I was pulling from other staff that do other jobs to try to help me make this go. Uh, we continued to work, we were able to get a little bit of money from East Point for our district. That, uh, that's seventy thousand dollars, which I was able to hire a FARC coordinator and also purchase funding for testing, or purchase on testing, incentive supplies and graduation supplies. That was the basis that we did back in, um, early twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. I also got introduced to the grant world, which I knew nothing about, nothing. They didn't teach me that in law school, did they teach you that? It was, and it, if you don't, y'all do, y'all do it, but it was like mind-blowing. Um, so I started learning about that. I was able to partici- our local team was able to participate in twenty-eighteen in a Blue Cross Blue Shield UNC School of Government Opioid Response Project, which we got a little bit of money for. And through that process, we were able to meet some grant writers, and they all helped us to the point where we were, um, able to apply for grants, and we received in twenty-twenty for our district, um, two grants, um, one eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars and the other two hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred over a three-year period. So that's a significant amount of money for us. We had been able to get ABC funds, I know y'all are familiar with all of that, from both Wayne and Lenore Counties to kind of supplement, um, the things that we were doing. But the grant money is what we really, what really, uh, has been, has enabled us to move forward and really operate this program under the best practice standards. So with that money, what we've done is, um, we have, um, increased our treatment options. We have hired staff to be able to operate our program. We have been able to provide some transportation, which is a huge issue in Green County, just like it is over in Lenore. Uh, we have been able to partner and have transitional housing for women with children, which has always been a big problem. Those are my two things, transportation and housing, that have been obstacles that we as small rural communities have to figure out how to address. So, um, as I mentioned, I'll go through this quickly. We were in the process of trying to implement an adult, uh, drug court. We've figured out our mission statement, this is it. And, uh, we again will be, uh, taking into that court individuals who have criminal charges, uh, who also have substance use disorders. And we will be partnering very closely with probation and the District Attorney's Office and the defense lawyers to run this program, to be able to help this population. Now, and y'all, y'all know, I say, some of y'all have heard me say it, when you live in a rural area like we do, I might hold Abuse and Neglect Court on Tuesday, I might hold Delinquency Court on Wednesday, I might be in Drug Court on Thursday, I might be in Domestic Violence Court on Friday, and then I see them all in the food line on Saturday. That's how it works, right? So we expect to have an interaction really between, um, our participants in both the family and the adult recovery courts. I already know that, because al- almost all of my participants in my family drug court have pending criminal charges. And so we try to help them with that too, because that's part of their problem that can be an obstacle to their recovery. So again, we're going to be hoping to, um, help folks with recovery. We're going to be hoping to make communities safer. We're going to hope to reduce recidivism and to decrease, uh, the workload in the, in the criminal court system with the adult drug court. So, um, challenges to our, and this is to both courts, are again, um, transportation and housing. I was ve- I always love hearing about all the, uh, employment opportunities, because that, we always get there. Actually, it's very, very interesting, because sometimes, uh, when people first get engaged, they go out and get a job they hadn't had one in five years. They need one right now at the beginning of drug court, but then that, that means they can't come to drug court, and they can't go to their testing, and they can't go to their treatment. I'm like, you haven't had a job in five years, why do you need one right now? We want you to get a job, and we're going to work on that, but these first three months, we're going to be working on treatment and getting, well, then we're going to go meet with these folks right here, who already partner with us, by the way. The, um, the, um, Lenore Community College, um, workforce. So, um, and, oh, treatment, I wanted to mention treatment specifically to Green County, because you don't have all those resources over here. And, and so that, that's been a problem in the past. Um, but we are partnering with folks to try to improve that. I work with, is Joy still here? Work with the Health Department over here, and, um, I think they've been working with one of our treatment providers over in, in, in Lenore County. We're trying to make all those connections to try to get those types of resources over here for you guys. I know your paramedic folks probably run into the substance use issue when they respond to these calls too. Um, we, some of our funding has gone to expand treatment options into the evening and on weekends, because everybody can't get there from nine to five Monday through Friday. So our community partners, again, treatment providers, social services, um, housing, I'll talk about that some more in a few minutes, um, cooperative extension, uh, the community colleges. Those are all the people that we're partnering with, and we all get together. The, all those representatives from those folks have gone to the various trainings with me and to the opportunities that we've had for the grant writing, they've all supported all of that. They've all supported all of that. Hope Restorations, I don't, are y'all familiar with Hope Restorations? It's in Kinston, um Chris Jenkins, um he has partnered with us. We now have the ability in this house to um house women for transitional living. And it's going very well. And, and of course, it can include individuals from Green County. Right now, I think there are one or two folks from Wayne County in that house in Kinston. Because of our district and our interaction with each other, we're able to use whatever it happens right now to be Hope Restorations, that location, and get individuals from all within our district to that place and to be able to benefit from that service. Um, it'd be great to have these things in everybody's county individually, maybe someday in the future. But sometimes these folks, the best thing that happened to them is they get out of their community. And sometimes it's good to get a whole new set of friends in another place. And we've seen that happen. So that's what, this is what happened in Kinston. Uh, when I started working with Chris, he, he, the upstairs, it was middle of COVID. And it was kind of, men had been staying up there and they really, you know, they didn't seem, they kept telling me they don't care what it looks like. So I said, well, we got to do something different, the women are going to be here. So I got with a friend of mine and she pulled together about fifteen women and they made little teams and they went into the, picked a room and they all went in and decorated these rooms. It was really beautiful. And it's really quiet when the ladies go up there. Some of them have come in there and said, I've never, I've never lived in a place like this. And it's quiet, um you can, they, they're very appreciative of it. So um, this is an educational room that they have there. So we can do groups and other kinds of things at the House of Hope. And then, of course, our justice partners include, again, DSS, probation, law enforcement, the District Attorney uh and defense impaired attorneys. We also have a local management committee. Uh, we meet every two uh months. And anybody that wants to be on that committee is welcome to be on it. Uh, just to update um our progress, what we're doing and to talk about any concerns anybody has or suggestions that anybody has. We also go to training with our team. This was ve- the training is very important and we had no money to do that with. So the grant money has helped us with this. Um, because drug, drugs themselves, plus how to treat, all of that changes constantly. We can't keep up with the drugs that come out constantly. And so it's very important to go to these uh trainings to fu- to know what we're doing and to stay on top of that. So this is um, this is the next step is sustainability because all you grant folks know that when you have federal grant money, you have to show how you're going to sustain this program. And I have been very excited in the last couple of years because discussions on a national basis and statewide, discussions have expanded very much to rural communities. When I first started going to this stuff, there was no, just no mention of that as it being any different. Well, we all know that's not true. When I go sit in some training and, and everybody there's from Mecklenburg and Wake County and New Hanover and they start talking about they're doing this and that and all the things they got going on. It's meaningless to me because there's no way that's, they, when it's, when the state defunded their Drug Court programs, guess who started paying for it? The counties, they took them over. Well, that's not happening in the Eighth Judicial District, not in any of our counties. We can't, we don't have that option. But I think that the rural nature of rural, that rural issues that we all face are finally starting to be seen more by other folks outside of where we are. And I'm excited about that. And it brings me to my, I think that's, this is just my last little quote. I don't tell, some of y'all know this. Y'all know Misty Copeland, anybody? She's a ballerina. So just in case y'all didn't know, I majored in dance performance in college. So somehow I got from being a dance major to being a judge for twenty years. And so I call it my up and down and curvy path. That's kind of what it is. But um, I love this quote because this is what I, the, the, what Drug Court is. It is the right people there, the right people there to support you. That's what Drug Court is. And when you have that, anything is possible. So I love that. And um, it brings me to the next reason why I'm here. Are you ready for me to do that or not?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, okay. So um, uh, there, the MOU is um, so y'all know, I know you've had lots of literature about this. Um, the opioid settlement um is real and it's here. And when I first started hearing about it, I got, I was just so excited about that because of the possibilities that it provides for a district like ours. Where I didn't know what was going to happen next. I'm my, I'm dedicated to continuing to pursue and grant money. But eventually you can't operate a program like this on just grant money. And the opioid settlement funds allow us the opportunity as I've, my vision is as a district to be able to continue our Drug Courts, plus our partnerships. And all the, those folks out in our communities that do treatment, that do parenting, that do housing, that do transportation, all those things that are related in any way in any of our three counties to opioid use can all come together and work with the Drug Courts. And I believe that if we are able to pool our resources because we are connected in so many ways, like the economic development, like the court system. Uh, as a three county district, if we approach looking at our funds together that way to provide for all three of our counties, we can get the best bang for our buck doing that. For example, I'll be leading Drug Court. Well, I'm going to lead it in all three counties instead of you having to come up with a separate judge in each county. So there's so many players that are the same. The DA's are the same, the probation office is the same. So I think that we have a lot of options to at least explore that possibility and um see if there isn't some way that we can come together. And so the MOU, uh we've dis- I've discussed it with all three counties, with their county managers and with um, um leadership. And um, the MOU is simply at, asking you guys to agree to talk about it. Not necessarily to agree to do it, but to talk about it and explore um a district wide approach and um coming together with those settlement funds. Because those funds are ve- they're, they're very specific. They have to be used for specific things, they'll be audited and they'll, they'll be, have to be accountable for them. And I believe if we can come up with a system together where we, we set in place a way to access those funds, to address the individual community's needs, that um it will help you guys. It'll definitely, I think, help the county manager's office or, because uh, you know, otherwise you're going to, every time you turn around, this group and that group's going to be coming and saying, we want this little pot of money. And, and, and it's going to be hard to see, are we accomplishing some kind of overarching goal? Or are we just turn, you know, like I do my daughter, right? Every time she comes up, I give her some money. And then you don't know what's happening at the end of the year, right? So um, that's my proposal about that today. And I don't know the protocol. My s- my second proposal is mo- May is Drug Court Awareness Month. And I would like to um, um, to propose that um, that, that there be a resolution that Green County recognize that. I wanted to mention one final thing about Green County. Up until last year, we did not do Drug Court over here. We allowed end of residents to do Drug Court, but they had to go to Goldsboro or Kinston to do it. Last year, we started coming over here. So we now, I come over here and I hold Drug Court. Now, right now, we've got three um Wayne County, all involved with DSS cases that we're dealing with um that are Green County citizens. So I just wanted to let you know that too. So I don't know the protocol, you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There is a MOU attached to the presentation from Judge Heath. Um, if you're all in agreement um on exploring the opportunity for a regional recovery type center, I would ask that you approve the MOU for that cause for Judge Heath.
I'm certainly in agreement and I would entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion. And a second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion. Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so per se. Uh, uh, opposed, neither, I have a motion carried unanimously.
And I will take care of the proclamation in my section.
Okay, all right. And so uh I just have a, a little bit of um literature that I'm going to pass around to you guys that we're like, like we're getting ready to do, we're getting ready to do some billboards that look like this. We've never been able to do that before. So that our, our citizens know this is available, a possibility to them. So I just wanted you to see uh some of these things. I'll just say that you handle that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
All right, those that have been rehabilitated, is there a certain percentage that slid back into the left?
Uh, there, I'm sure there is and I just don't know the number, but the answer is yes, they do. And I actually have one participant right now among Lenore County Court that went through it several years ago and now she's back. And um, she has, and this is very normal. She also has significant mental health.
Right.
Diagnosis and, and so many of our folks do. And I think one thing leads to another.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but with her, she, she knows exactly what to do.
Okay.
And so I could try to get those numbers for you.
That's, that's good, thank you.
But it does happen.
Okay, thank you.
I also like know success stories. I mean, sometimes they do slip. You do have success stories in this program, I'm sure.
You want to know one? I got one right now. I got a young lady who um came uh, uh, took a couple of times to watch and she um was sick, 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 big as my finger. And, and the, she would leave and I'd go, you know, I may never see her again. I don't know if I will ever see her again. And then she came back and I was like, okay. And that was the day, don't know why, but that was the day she was ready to go somewhere. So we pick, we put her in the car and we carried her to detox. And she stayed there, I don't remember, for seven, ten days or something. And in the meantime, we made arrangement um to the um Miriam House, which is in Carteret County. And we went and picked her up from detox and we took her to that place and she stayed there six months. And so we did something we'd never done before. Used to when pe- folks would go into any kind of treatment, residential treatment or whatever, we'd suspend them from our program because, but COVID allowed us something that we'd not ever done before. And that was, we were doing virtual hearings. So we set that up with the lady at Miriam House and she let her get on Zoom with us. And so we didn't terminate her from the program. So the whole time she was there, she was still ours. And she knew we were paying attention to her, she was meeting with me by Zoom. And so that was exciting. Then when she got um finished with the six months there, we picked her up, we took her to the House of Hope in Kinston. And she lived there until just about four weeks ago and they helped her. And she's now gotten into her own house. And two weeks ago, she graduated uh from Drug Court. And, and uh we helped her get a job, Motor Earth, Mo- Mother, Motor Earth Motor Lodge. I ca- I'm not saying the brewery because that's not good for Drug Court people. But Mother Earth Motor Lodge is partnering with us and hiring our folks that are doing really well. And, and she's working there, has moved her way up and she's just doing amazingly. And honestly, I, I, I thought she was going to die.
And that's one of the things that makes this program worthwhile.
One at a time. So if you're looking for big numbers, you're not going to get them, but one at a time. And she's got children and I feel very confident that she's going to.
That House of Hope is a great opportunity. I've been there.
Have you been in it?
It's in her neighborhood and they keep it neat as a pin, inside and out.
Yeah.
I'm very amazed at what they could do.
And if you ever want to see it, I'm sure they'll be glad if you're going through Kinston for you to see it. They, Chris has done a great job and he's wanting to expand, so I'm looking for that in the future. He's, I know he's working on one house over in Wayne County right now. He's got like forty one properties in Lenore County. So, all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Um, first item for action, I would ask that you remove from the table um the RFP for auditing services for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Um, I had a, I was a bit apprehensive at the last meeting. I solicited companies, I didn't advertise in review of the statute uh, it said to advertise. And because of all the federal funds, uh I'd asked that you pull it and we just advertised it. We did not receive any other um, any other RFPs than what we had already uh received. And that was one from Malden Jenkins with two other firms declining to bid. Um, right now, the workforce is uh in a, in a funny position. I've never seen it before. Um, qualified staff is um kind of the exception rather than the rule these days. And I know Cherry Beckett has dropped uh, I believe it was five thousand billable hours. And if you knew what their hourly rate was, that would make you shake your head, but they just can't get the qualified staff. So we were ones that were dropped sadly. We were one of the last to have them, so we're one of the first to go. They assisted us in finding a audit firm where we actually had a relationship with some of the people already there. And they decided they would like to um give a proposal for services and that is Malden Jenkins. I hope you've had a moment to review it. Um, if there are no questions, I would ask that you approve the RFP for auditing services, awarding it to Malden Jenkins.
Move to take off the table, our proposal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, take it off the table, any further discussion.
Could you go over the price with this uh Malden and Jenkins company?
Yeah.
There's no discussion, we would take it off the table.
We just take it off the table.
We vote on it and then we just.
We vote on taking it off the table and then we'll have discussion.
Then we have discussion, yes.
So, I'm serious. So, so there is a motion and a second, take it off the table.
I'll pull them words back in the mail.
There's a motion and a second, take it off the table, any further discussion on that. Hearing none, those in favor of taking it off the table signify so per se. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The House have the motion carried unanimously, now.
Thank you. The question was about pricing.
I guess I should say, Father May I?
No, ma'am. Um, the question was about pricing. And uh, if we can recall, our last fiscal audit with Cherry Beckett was at a cost of sixty eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and that was for five programs to be audited. They ended up having to audit six, which had an increase in cost to of uh three thousand or four thousand dollars. It ended up being seventy one five. Um, Malden Jenkins is proposing in twenty twenty two, seventy two thousand, twenty twenty three, an increase of five thousand to seventy seven thousand and an increase of five thousand and twenty four to eighty two thousand. Now, you may be asking, wow, these prices are going up. Because of the issue with these auditing firms getting qualified candidates, I was told to expect a twenty to forty percent increase in cost for audit. Um, there's just not as many qualified firms getting qualified staff to perform the function of audit in a timely manner. Um, I, I was very pleased with this pricing. Um, I know it seems like it's higher, but we'll, we'll account for it in the budget.
And this is just the audit part, financial statements is a whole different.
That's cr- that, that is correct. Um, I believe.
And price.
Yes, that is an additional, a third party, um Ily Company. And I believe that went up a thousand dollars, it was minimal. But th- these services are just becoming more expensive, but we are required to do it.
By the LGC.
That's correct, by the State Treasurer.
Move to approve the contract with Malden and Jenkins, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the contract, do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a second, is there any further discussion now? Here are none, I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so per se. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item for action has previously been mentioned by Judge Heath, that is a proclamation, uh, declaring May, uh, Drug Court Month. I hope you've had an opportunity to read the proclamation. If there are no questions, I would ask for approval of said proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that one? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Thank you. Our next item for action is the appointment of an interim finance officer. Um, recently I was speaking with Ms. Edmondson, and we were speaking about our previous finance officer, we're looking on for another position. And she asked who we appoint, and I said, well, I haven't, I haven't asked them to appoint anyone, and she said, you need to. And that's why you're seeing it here. Um, I would ask that you appoint Mr. Landon Price as our interim finance officer to carry on the duties of finance officer until that process of hiring can, can be done.
Move, move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Just one comment, sir, on your presentations.
Yes.
Spell check is not doing you any favors.
Say it again.
Spell check is not doing you any favors.
Okay.
If you look on the second line.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what that word is.
I don't know what that is either, I have to Google it.
So he's an end- enduvial.
I believe it's supposed to read individual, sorry about that.
Excuse me, folks, I think it's the time of the year, but anyhow. We do have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the appointment of our interim finance officer as an in- as an enduvial. But, uh, all those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll try.
And I apologize for my little voice problem, I do.
Last item for action is a proposal for Phase One of HVAC replacement and repair. We've had multiple conversations about different ways of doing this. Um, I, I really wanted to have more of a presentation for the community on how we were going to propose spending ARP funds and then repurposing or supplanting them as is being recommended by school government and the LGC. I hadn't received confirmation from them as of yet, um, on a grant project budget ordinance amendment. Uh, but the pricing for this particular function and facet, um, it runs out April first. They, they agreed to hold it till today, tomorrow morning, if I let them know that you approve it. Um, and it is for what I think of as Phase One of our HVAC renovations and repair. Phase One is for the complex controls, that's our building and health services. Um, it's replacing the ten air handlers at that facility. And it's installing the, uh, IAQ, or the internal air quality of all facilities in the county. The total of those is roughly three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, I believe. And, uh, it, it is very needed, it's, uh, we, we have continuous and constant problems over there, uh, Joy and Stephanie can vouch for that, uh, but I'll, I'll answer any questions you might have.
One question I had is, when it goes through with each area.
Yeah.
It talks about Green County Operations Center.
Yes.
We just completed this project, why was that not done during the project completion instead of adding twenty-one thousand to it?
Okay, I think what you're speaking about.
Says scope of work, Green County Operations Center.
Yeah, let me, let me take a look here.
Maybe that's why we're talking so bad, 'cause we're not having the filters coming in.
Are, are you talking about the, adding the IAQ to this facility?
This is provide all necessary labor materials for install GPS, needlepoint, bipolar, visualization units on thirty-two HVAC units.
Yes, that's, that's.
So why wasn't that done when we did the building?
Um, it was not, it was not in the construction contract. This is additional, this is on top of, this is, uh, the most current and.
Right, so I'd say this, to me, should be the most up to date. And I have to do the twenty-one thousand, but that's just me.
Okay.
Green County Transportation, I'm assuming that's elections office now?
Yeah.
Move to approve Phase One HVAC replacement and repair for Green County, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve Phase One, that's back on for Green County Phase One, that was second.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Madam County Attorney, do you have any comments for today?
No comments.
Thank you. Commissioner, reports or recommendations?
I got some. I want to take a moment to thank everyone that was involved in Pirate Patch this past weekend. I enjoy seeing many kids hauls the first turkey and take home several prizes. I just want to remind everyone that the second annual new destruction competition we held this weekend at the same location. While we're talking turkey, I noticed the entrance to Cheryl's cafe is being repaired. Hopefully it won't be too long before then Wednesday return to normalcy with getting that same turkey barbecue. I sent department updates from the Center Center. This Carolina county's air agents on aging is providing assistance to address nutritional needs with people aged sixty or older are providing a five-hundred-dollar per household food reimbursement. If you're a Green County citizen aged sixty or older, be sure to contact the Center Center for more information. There is no income limit to be eligible. This department's social service also has some upcoming events. On Friday, April the eighth, there will be a flag-raising ceremony at the county office complex at nine o'clock. On Wednesday, April twentieth, there will have, there will host a balloon release at the courthouse at five PM. Both the events will be in honor of child abuse prevention month. The Child Welfare Department is also raising money by selling purple awareness keychains. The keychains cons- consist of a purple ribbon with the word awareness at the bottom and can be purchased through the department for five dollars. Moving into county business, I explored the trails behind the recreation complex just today after church. When I sat on one of the benches overlooking the creek, I couldn't help but to think of all the trails I had been over, over the past few years. I have to say the trails of the recreation complex are far better than some of the state main character trails I have traveled. If we fill in a spot where there's been an oval wash and added a couple more benches, tractors, settlers, and some signs along the trails, we would have some of the best walking trails in the state. I would like to see some money in the next budget for trail improvement. I also talked to the fire inspector this morning about the trail, and he would like to help mark them in case there is an emergency. Our trails are something to be proud of and rest of minor upgrades, which should not have any trouble claiming that they are among the best in the state. I also would like the administration to take a look at the public information request process. I received several concerns from individuals who told me that they had made a request with public information and had never received a response. I understand that some of these requests may take some time, but we need to ensure that we at least acknowledge that the request has been received. And finally, I know I'm gonna lose a couple votes and friends by saying this, and I probably should semi-agree about the issue, the dirt car here in Dick, Kansas.
No.
Now we got a robbery here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, tell our community of Green County farmers and any other individual that has any chemicals around their house that they would like to get rid of legally. There's gonna be a ke- chemical disposal site at Pitt County Extension Service tomorrow at nine o'clock, no, Wednesday at nine o'clock, I'm sorry. Wednesday at nine o'clock, any form of household in the original container with the label on it, if possible. But if you don't know what it is, you can bring it, if they can identify it, they will take it. Yes. Free, yeah, yeah, free.
There is no charge.
No charge.
It's a service.
It's a service. Right, 'cause a lot of times you got a little piece of container of one chemical that's been sitting there a year or two and it's done gone to the bed or whatever, but you don't be pouring it on the ground or anything like this, they have a society, they can treat it and dispose of it like it ought to be, okay?
And that is a service.
Right.
Any other commissioner comments or recommendations?
We have a meeting in the morning at nine o'clock, or not a meeting, but a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Yeah. Hearing none, others, I would say that we did have, uh, the Shire Volunteer Fire Department had a great, uh, reverse drawing Saturday night. The steak was delicious, it was good, and we continue to support our volunteers. Hearing nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to adjourn, any further discussion? Scott, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor of adjournment signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?